This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. It is January 14th at 6:00 PM. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Vader City Council. Roll call.
Donna Rogers here, Jason Daly.
Here.
Randy Paul.
Here.
Samantha Lovelady.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
And Mayor's John.
Here.
We have a full core. Everyone's here. Pledge of Allegiance. Donna, what do you do on?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mayor report. I want to inform council that the wastewater treatment plant upgrade bids have gone live. And in just a short amount of time, we've had 10 different contractors put in interest, saying that they're interested in. And so that is amazing news. The more, the better. Lots of different options, lots of options, ideas and better opportunities for a smaller, a smaller construction amount. So as those come in, the final bids for those are due in mid-February, I believe. Civil West will go through them and find, make sure that they seem accurate. And then they'll have a recommendation for council based on price and and what they think would be the highest quality product. And then, of course, council will have the final decision of whether or not we want to select that. But we'll have input from Civil West. So that's, that's, that's coming quickly. Lawsuit update. It's not so much just an update as, as, for your knowledge, the city was served with a lawsuit from Ms. Costello regarding her roofing project and perceptions of unfair treatment. That case was originally filed in Lewis County Superior Court, and it got moved to federal US District Court. Our insurance company will be representing the city at no cost to us in this case. So just so that you are aware of that, there will be a little bit of cost involved from our attorney when she relayed the information to the other attorneys, since our attorney was the expert on the case up to that point. So there will be a little bit of cost related to that transfer of information, but the actual case and everything else will be covered by RMSA. Yes. Sure.
I want to know why it's only the federal.
The attorneys requested that. I'm not, I don't understand the full details of why they did that, why they asked for it to be moved from one court to another, but, but they did. And it was, the courts felt that that it didn't warrant it. I don't understand all the details. I could find out for you, though.
Wait, I'd like to know why.
Okay.
I'd like to know why this isn't settled. I'd like to know why I was spending all these thousands of dollars for months and months and months over for a green product.
I could spend some time after the meeting, if you like, going over it with you. It's lengthy at this point.
I have Jason's permit in here, as well as town. I don't, I don't understand why he got charged that much money. But I, do you have your asbestos?
Um.
Report?
I don't see where this is pertinent.
Wait, it is pertinent because Judy, I hope, didn't you thought Ellen and I were people who were told this because of an asbestos report? So where's yours?
This is, this is, this is the mayor's report right now. I, if you'd like, you can bring it up again in the, in the elected official comment, and we can talk about it then, too. But like I said, I don't, I don't, just as, to say a few words to it, I don't have all that information right off the top of my head. There's a ton of it. And so I won't be able to answer all your questions immediately. And so.
So if attorney's, I'm talking to you, okay.
And so, but if you have a question that I can't answer, I will be most certainly find the answer for you.
I shall wait until.
Okay. You good? Okay. Uh, I have number three mayor's report. The flooding, stormwater update. So there was a variety of flooding around town as, as usual. There was quite a bit of flooding up on the north end of G Street across the highway. And a lot of that, they thought was due to the new construction up on the hill. There's the new log home just outside of town. And, and so the, the water flows was, was quite different this year. And so we did get a, a small backhoe and John put a new ditch in up on G. There wasn't a ditch before. And that seems like that's alleviated some of that. There were some also, some flooding issues at the, over by the church again, and also over here by the fire station. And those two issues could be fixed with the city business items tonight with Lewis County and being able to do those for us. And new today, the ditch on the highway, nearly right across from the, the, the city warehouse building. All the water is draining into a small sinkhole. The ditch is draining right in the middle of the ditch, and it's going someplace. And so John is trying to investigate where all that water is going. It looks like there's an old, an old pipe there of some kind. Maybe wood with like a mesh that would have been around it. And he put some dye in it today and tried to see if it was going to the waste.
The old water pipe.
So old, yeah, he was looking to see if it went to the wastewater facility, and it was not. And so anyway, so we're, we're going to still investigate that. Obviously, we can't have water draining under the highway. And so we're probably going to get a hold of the, the state as well and see what they can do. Anyway, so a variety of things, and we're following up on them. Um, urban design standards. So if you remember, our engineer was recommending that we update our urban design standards. This would include like stormwater, excuse me, stormwater or water, water pipes and things like that for a home builder. So a new home, we have certain regulations, and these are the urban design standards. We did submit a grant to the Lewis County EDC for $20,000 to pay for those. So hopefully, we'll get that back, we'll, we'll get that grant, and we can update our design standards with no cost to the city. We did put some money in the budget for that. But if we can get a grant instead of using our budgeted money, yeah, more better. City Hall water leak. So it was noticed two days ago that there was a little bit of rippling in the drywall in the bathroom, in the, in the clerk's office. John thinks it's, it was coming from the, there's a, there's a vent on the roof up there, and he thought the, the rubber around the vent was cracked. And so he thought that's what it is. So he resealed all of that, and we were hopeful that that, that that is fixed for now. Obviously, we have in the budget, a new roof for City Hall, which would be the, the permanent fix for that. Washington, the, the Washington Department of Licensing is assuming issuance of all business licenses in the summer. That was FYI as well. It's not really up to the city. They're just doing it. Diane, is there more information council needs to know at this time?
Uh, no, we've met with them via webcam twice now, and they're going to meet with us three more times before the end of March to talk about how the system works, how that we can input our stuff we have now, and how that we will refer businesses to them in the future. They will update us as far as whose has expired and all of that. So supposedly, they're going to do well paid work, collect the money for us. It will cost us nothing as a city. And that's what they're telling us.
And lastly, new construction update. I just wanted to inform the council of last year and this year. So last year, we had six new stick-built homes either completed or have, or, or requested permits for, and three new manufactured homes. So in 2020, we had nine new homes in, in town. And then in 2021, we already have permits requested for five more. So that's really exciting. And we're working with ecology to try to squeeze a few more canoe connections for our wastewater treatment plant out of them. Because obviously, they're, they've been reluctant to have us in, have even more homes. And so we've got a request in for a few more just so we can keep these, this development going here in town.
Is that, is that because of our whole system?
Right, yeah. So our whole system is considered to be overburdened. And so they don't, they would rather us not have more homes going into a, more, if, if, going into an overburdened system. However, obviously, just a few more homes going into an over, another overly burdened system is not really a small drop in a very large pond, I guess you could say, right? So we're working on that as well to try to keep these developers happy and interested in, in building in the city. All right, council reports. Council, do you have any reports?
I don't have any report on anything.
Good. All right, hearing none. Agenda approval. I would like to add one item of city business, number three, council to discuss manufactured homes. Are there any other additions? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion for the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council agenda for 1/14/2021 with the addition of number three to discuss manufactured homes.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the agenda with the item number three addition, council to consider manufactured homes, or discuss manufactured homes, excuse me. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Seceded by Ms. Lovelady. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval. Like to make a note that there are two different minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for 12/3/2020 and for the city council meeting minutes on 12/10/2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the city council meeting minutes for December 3rd and December 10th. Do we have a second? Seceded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Wow. I'll do this one, too. I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers for December, the first of December for $55,726,000 or $0.88 or the end of December, $21,307.23. The extended December, $25,108.71. The total December of 2020 for $102,142.82. And for the beginning of January, $36,888.62.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second? Seceded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports, Lewis County Sheriff's Department. Mr. Fraz is here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We sent a law enforcement active report for the month of December. There were 272 citizen contacts, total of 12 service calls, four of which were when somebody was dedicated to the city of Vader. There were 26 traffic stops with one misdemeanor arrest, no felony arrests.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Fraz? All right, hearing none. Moving on to city business. Item number one. Council to consider resolution 01-2021, the Lewis County Master Interlocal Agreement. This interlocal agreement will allow us to do public works, projects using Lewis County.
Public works.
Using Lewis, Lewis County Public Works. Thank you. Lost it for a second. So the city didn't have this on file before. And so being able to do this, we'll be able to, to utilize Lewis County's resources.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 01-2021.
Give a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution 01-2021. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seceded by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And then the follow-up to that, city business item number two, Lewis County Work Order for Vader 21-001 for Stormwater Repairs. So this work order with Lewis County would utilize their resources to come take care of the crushed water line, or excuse me, stormwater line under A Street over at the intersection of A and Sixth. And it would also take care of the culvert over here by the fire station that goes underneath B Street. That culvert is angled improperly, and so the water has to get quite high up into the yards of the other people before it finally flows under the road and then to the ditch, and then essentially to the Olaqua. So it would take care of both of those issues. And the funding for this, as I stated in my email, it does not come out of the general fund. It comes out of our STP funds that are funded through the gas tax. And we have roughly $20,000 in that. And so we'll be able to use roughly half of it to take care of these issues.
I know that they also do circles around the stormwater drain down by the storage units that goes in, that goes into the, the Olaqua right there that's been crushed or.
Yeah, I know they were looking at that. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the final verdict was on that. So, but a follow-up on that.
Okay.
I know that was one of the items that council had discussed and one of the ones that they had looked at. They'd also looked at a culvert off the C Street alley that had some issues back in December, too. John's kind of taking care of that one, but it seemed, it seems to be okay.
Yeah, I just know that that one down there is going to take some, like, digging power, too.
Yeah, and then just today, there, along with that one small sinkhole there at the ditch across from the city warehouse, that line that the, the ditches on the, this side of the highway are not draining quickly either down past the post office and everything. And so I think there may be another, another job coming up, too, so we could fix these stormwater issues. But for now, this is just for those two. So, and if you're wondering if it was a fair price, we had gotten bids from private contractors for just the A Street project that were more than this one. That fixes two different problems. If you're wondering if this was a fair price.
Do we need a motion for this?
We should have a motion for this. It's a large expenditure.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the work order for Vader 21-001, the stormwater repairs.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the Lewis County Work Order for Stormwater Repairs. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seceded by Ms. Lovely Lady. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the Lewis County Work Order for Stormwater Repairs, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Last item of city business, number three, council to discuss manufactured homes. So it's come, it's come up a few times where council has even concerned about too many new manufactured homes going in versus stick-built homes. I, I had a discussion with our, with Gary Cooper, our planner, about this. And we really kind of need to know what direction council's interested in if we wanted to regulate this in, in some way. And I just wanted to kind of feel, feel, get a feel for what, what you all were thinking. I mean, are we, do we have enough manufactured homes? Do we want to take away that ability for people to install the manufactured homes? Do we want to maybe figure out a way to limit the number of new manufactured homes per year? Do we want to maybe create certain design standards and regulations for manufactured homes? Maybe they needed to be on certain kinds of foundations or something else that would make them more stick-built home-like. So anyway, there's lots of different directions to go. And it's kind of up to council. Before we started anything, I wanted to hear, I hear your thoughts. You know, the, a, a larger issue that hasn't come up is a developer could, could come and buy a large, a large parcel of land and put in a couple dozen manufactured homes at once. And, you know, if we didn't do something, so.
That would be a mobile home park. And the, the requirements for that, and I look several years ago when we had the F Street issues down there. And that is like an ordeal built in with the state to get a mobile home park, according to the standards that it requires, but.
It's an extreme case, but it's, but it's, it, it, it's, it's something for council to think about. You know, how, how, do we want to do something? Is, is any home better than no home? You know, we have these, these builders right now that are interested in building, you know, stick-built homes right now. They, they want to buy every piece of property they can, build a stick-built home. That's great.
I thought the issue was, we just, we're going to be money on the property.
That will come. Yeah, the, the, the planning committee is working on the, the fee schedule, and the fees for manufactured homes.
My own, my own.
Yeah.
I think that if there's a way to limit the manufactured homes, then we should do it right now. There's been a lot of people that just, or there's one or two guys that come in that buy the land, throw a cheap manufactured on it, and sell it. And when they sell those manufacturers, their, their warranty doesn't, the manufacturer's warranty only lasts for the purchaser, which is the developer guy. So I know of one that hers has fallen apart, and it's only a couple of years old. And she's kind of in a tight spot, and it just takes down the value all the way around. So if we can't stop them, I'd love to see them stop. We have plenty of them here.
Yeah, another way to do this maybe would be to, with the fee schedule, maybe the manufactured home fee could be very high, even higher than a, a stick-built home. And so the incentive would be to build a stick-built home versus a manufactured home. There's a variety of ways that we could do it, just depending on what council wants to do.
I, I would like to see. You know, the mobile homes are okay, but the ones that they're bringing in here now, it's like, these are just people coming in here, buying property, turning it up, and they're leaving garbage in here. And that's what they don't like. The two they put over there are the one on C Street. They just look awful. The one down on F Street, both of them part on the corner of Park Road and that, and one on F Street that they sat. They're just cheap, and they look cheap. And it's making Vader look shitty.
Is there a way?
Yeah, there's a right way and a wrong way to do it. You can have manufactured home, and it'd be amazing. And, and, and that would be.
Absolutely beautiful.
And, and that would be what I was, one of those things I was suggesting was, design standards.
Is there a way to, like, limit how many are in a certain area?
Or, that, that could be a possibility, too.
This is.
Like I said, this is kind of the end stages of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of hard, though, Jason.
I, I know. I, I just was trying to think of how.
Yeah, we don't have enough land for you to do that. I don't think.
I know. How could, could you maybe sell two stick-built homes to every one mobile home thing? And that's just weird, too. I just don't know. So. Be interesting. I'll, I'll wait for your ideas.
I don't know. We're just unique here at Vader because we are so small. So we are going to be kind of held to. But we need a quality standard, not garbage. We're already starting to look like a swamp. I mean, there's garbage everywhere. There's mattresses dumped on empty lots. And people are just using it for a garbage dump. And all the garbage backup pickup trucks are full of garbage all the time stacked up against buildings. And we're not doing anything about that. And when people drive through here, especially the trashy ones, they go, let's move to Vader. They don't mind. That's what we don't mind.
Well, you were just suggesting that we have some, maybe, maybe, yeah, standards for manufactured homes.
Yes.
Instead of limiting the number, changing, having a higher standard.
Well, that could be, too. Like I say, I don't know. We've got a lot of developers coming in here, and they want to get away for cheap. I'm just like, like I said, that lady's mobile home is falling apart.
I feel like the idea of having the, the fee for a mobile home and the stipulations and the design fees make it to where it's less attractive than, less difficult.
They're going to save a lot of money on the home, but you're going to pay the city a fee and.
Right. And then.
Or, I mean, it's, it's possibility.
Yes.
Do we, okay, because I'm not real sure how you go about that, but some of these manufactured homes requirements are still filled.
Right.
So what kind of quality standard?
Standard, yeah. That's the quality standards that we.
Yeah, the quality and the way they look.
Yeah, it, well, if that's, I mean, if that's the direction council's interested in going, maybe not limiting the number of them, but changing the, the standards. I could get some suggestions for you on that.
Something to talk about.
And you can think about it next couple of weeks if you want. This, I was, nothing, it has to happen tonight. You think, think about it. Think about Vader in the future and what, what we want to see in town. And one of the things the planner had, was, one of the concerns was affordable housing. You know, it's always a thing, right? And, and you want to have, have that ability, right, to, to have affordable housing for folks. And, and manufactured homes is one way of having affordable housing. So.
I think we have plenty of affordable housing right now.
Good.
We are low income. We are affordable.
If you look around the house lately, it's not really affordable.
I know, right?
With some of the price, you play the golf.
Okay. Okay, well, I've gotten a couple of different ideas. And I can, I can get some, get some official information for you at the next meeting, then. And if there's any other comments that you'd like to share before we move on? I got the, put the bug in your ear so you can all think about it, too. Okay, um, public comment. No one signed up. Is there any members of the public online that would like to speak? All right, hearing none. Elected official comment. Elected officials, now is your time.
Okay, I'll start. Hey, I, I want to know about this duty thing and why we're going through this just for her. When no one else has told to the standards that she has been now fixing. I want an answer to that because I, I, like I say, I've pulled building permits, I've pulled re-broke permits. Nobody has had to do what she's been required to do. And whatever she does, then if she does it, then there's something else. And then there's something else. Like I say, this isn't picking on Jason's, but does he have that?
I think this is an open case, and we should not be discussing it like this.
This got put on the agenda. This got put on the agenda, so this is open.
Well, what I will, what I'll, wha- what I'll say is there was a building permit application, there was a, along with that was the um, what's the right word, there was a a letter. What's the letter that goes along with the building permit application then?
The letter for required documents.
Yeah, there's, anyway, so so Ms. Costa was requested to have two inspections on her roof. She was told in three different documents that three inspections would be required. She signed one of those documents right below where it says two inspections are required. She did not get the first inspection, she continued to, she continued to put on the roof when she should have requ- requested the first inspection. With the stop work order came, when we we noticed that she was putting on shingles before the first inspection. She was given a list of things that could be done to correct this at that at that time, and she, instead of doing any of those list of options that we gave her, she decided to fight the city, which is what finally then appealed the process, and it went all the way to the hearings examiner. The hearings examiner sided with the city, said the city did everything correctly. We again gave her the list of conditions to fix the issue. And she again has not fixed the issue. Instead, she has taken it to the courts.
Well, and my question is again, why isn't anybody else in town held to the standards that you're holding her to? Nobody else has had to go through this.
Because everyone else is getting their inspections that they're required to get, and they're not fighting the city on it.
I have talked to some of the people that have had reworks done in the past several years, they've never even seen the inspector. So, you know, this is um, this is that honey, and you made her, and this is the state law, state law. You're supposed to have this asbestos, and you would know because you turned her into L and I. So L and I handles this, and so every rework that's done has to have an asbestos inspection on the shingles that are torn off. I talked to him personally.
Okay, I I I don't.
Why, why?
I don't know if that's right or wrong.
And you guys made her, and you wouldn't even let her clean it up. She had to wait a whole week while her rug leaked into her home, you haven't done that to anybody else in town. That's what I'm saying, you're doing to her what you don't require of anybody else. Did you get one, Jason? I have your permit here, you're required, why not?
Diane would like to say so.
I can speak to that, I was the one who accepted Jason's application, I went through the process, excuse me. I called the um contractor because the shingles had already been removed, obviously there had not been a cap. And I asked him, why did you go ahead and take the shingles without an asbestos requirement? And he goes, this house was built in nineteen ninety six, they didn't make asbestos shingles since like eighties. So there's no requirement because they're not there.
It's a requirement for L and I. They're waiting to take it off your roof, it requires an asbestos inspection today.
If it was built before a certain time period.
I looked on the website and said, and also the inspector in L and I.
I also did research on L and I, I did research with the Southwest Clean Air Agency, who would be involved in this. I looked online for any information about it and everything about asbestos talked about, that at a certain point, there was no more allowed. So after that point, you don't have to have it inspected. Judy's house was built way before then, so that's, I'm guessing one of her.
Judy's house was reworked into the eighties, so she didn't need it either because her shingles didn't have any asbestos in them either.
Okay.
So you guys just assumed stuff that you don't.
No, I did not assume, I got documentation, I talked to the people, it's on permit applications, all of it.
Well, then you need to start putting that on the applications, because he told me, I'm talking to L and I, so I'm gonna assume that I'm gonna take his word over contractors.
Okay, can you give us?
It's a state law, call L and I and ask the guy at L and I, don't count, ask me to get your information. Do the work I do.
I need to know who you talked to at L and I, because there's a lot of people that work there.
Well, any of them would be able to tell you the same thing. I didn't know who to talk to.
Oh, that's not true, because I get different information all the time from L and I, so I'd like to know who you stop, talk to also.
Well, just call up there and talk to one of my kids, is one I and the other one doesn't, or what?
Well, yeah, I can't, I can't speak for the L and I thing, City Hall wasn't involved with L and I whatsoever.
There's not a level playing field here.
Whatsoever, and so with L and I, they're their own agency and they do what they want to do, and this, obviously the city.
Disregard L and I because.
I'm not disregarding L and I, L and I does, L and I's gonna do what they do, I mean, they don't answer to the city of Vader.
No, but Judy has to answer to the city of Vader, and she has to jump through hoops that nobody else has had to jump through. They have not done it, nobody does. Soon as that, those shingles hit the ground, the contractors have it up and gone, and it's out of there.
I'm I'm sorry you feel that way, um like I said.
It's a fact, Joe, these are facts, I'm not sitting here making up stories.
If there was.
She has to do things that nobody else has done, and if you're not gonna do it to everybody else and stop doing it to her, and you guys have spent more money on her, you could have built that house by now for attorney fees that have been spent on that over a rework, seriously? And nobody on this council says a word about it, this is up to the council about how much money is spent. And you sit there and roll your eyes and think it's funny, you got away with it, so did all these other people in town. Has anybody else spent this much money on a rework?
I believe.
Where does this big inspector that runs around and jumps on everybody else? No, he's too busy over jumping on Judy, and he has no right to threaten to throw anybody in jail. You better have a little talk with him about that, he's a contractor, not an employee, and he's got a little bit too much authority for what he's supposed to be doing.
I have nothing personal against Ms. Costa whatsoever.
Oh.
She is a valued member of the community. There's, I have nothing against Ms. Costa. Everyone is held at the same standard, and if someone else was obviously ignoring things that they signed agreements with the city on what kind of inspections they would get, we would follow up the same way.
Yeah, and a rework was supposed to be a flat fee eighty six fifty, right?
She got it for eighty six fifty.
Mm-hmm, and then you redid it and altered that application, putting on, she had to have this particular inspection, and that is not on any other application for a rework.
It's on every application for a rework that happens.
No.
It's it's the standard that everyone goes by now.
Past three years of rework, that is not on there, not on any of them.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, it's a, it's not on any of them, go look at all of them, Joe. And then tell me why Judy's didn't say the fir- on the first one, but the next one she did, because it was altered. Okay, so let's move along.
But.
Now I have another question about the bid on the park, why there was such a huge gap between.
The bid on the park, what are you talking about?
On the park, to do the uh foundation of the jail. There were only two bids that I saw, and one was.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I I I follow you now, oh, back.
And the other one was very.
Oh, back in December for the for the budget.
Yeah, I have a question about that.
So, okay, so the, so um we solicited different um different contractors for um the jail foundation, and and we took the lowest one and had that on the budget, the lowest one was twenty thousand dollars or something like that, I can't remember exactly. And the other ones were fifty or sixty thousand dollars, and so that's the one that.
This is what I'm curious about.
And so that's the one, that's the one we presented to council.
I have another friend in town, I I know, so.
And so, can I, can I continue please? Thank you. Those were estimates. No contractors have been selected, when the time comes, the city is going to advertise again for that job, not just, again, we didn't advertise before, we just called some people. And we're gonna advertise, the bids will come in, and you know, it'll be the official process, those were just estimates for the city to make the budget. It wasn't giving the job away to anybody, the job has not been given away to anybody, the coun- the council will have to select a contractor, does that answer your question?
Yeah, as long as it's a fair deal.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, you're saying that one of the bids came in really low, the other bids were really high, so, but.
Yeah, so that.
And that and that will come in the in the in the selection process, council, but look at that, look at the kind of work that's going to be done, how they're gonna do it, and obviously jail is historical, we want to make sure it gets done correctly. And so, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to understand that and know why there's such a big price difference, and um, you know, maybe we want to go with more offensive option. We can't, you know, so when the time comes, we'll we'll do that.
Okay. One more thing, I heard from a citizen of the community today, and this has been an issue, I think, for a long time, and I don't understand it. But um can't get the agenda put online where they can come to the city site and get the agenda. And apparently the city clerk told someone today that uh shouldn't have to do that, it was posted out front. And I want to know what the problem is about letting the community know when there's a meeting, so they don't have to drive down here to City Hall to see if there's one. They should be able to get online, go to the city site and find the agenda, and I guess the minutes haven't been posted since November.
Online?
Online, yeah.
Okay, we can fix that.
Because I don't think an employee should be getting smart with citizens of the community and telling them what they can do and what they can't do. There shouldn't be a problem.
I don't think that city council people should get smart with our employees either.
Well, uh the people of this community don't need to take smart mouth from somebody telling them that I don't have to put it out there. That makes the citizen of the community who pays that person's wages a little upset, and I don't blame them. There's no reason these minutes and the agenda can't be put out on the city site, and the city site should be kept up to date.
Well, I think um uh I'm sure the way it's presented to the city employees probably goes a long way too, and if you come in and demand things versus request that it would be helpful, it would probably be, um go a long way too, that's why.
I just have to speak to that, that when that phone call came in, I was not even in the office, so the city clerk did not say that.
If you weren't in the office, how do you know?
Because I'm the city clerk.
You're the city clerk treasurer.
Yes.
The other lady is the city clerk.
No, she's a deputy clerk.
Oh, I am the clerk, well, it was the other lady. Well, about that, the deputy clerk?
Ms. Montgomery?
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, Stephanie is on the phone, can I speak?
Hello, Ms. Stephanie Montgomery, our deputy clerk, please do.
So I cannot even, I spoke to Cindy Radcliffe this morning, and if she's on the line, I would love to talk to her, because I was not smart mouth to her in any way. She did call about the agenda today, I did tell her that I would let uh the clerk know they weren't there, that we actually had a storm yesterday. We had some missing files, I don't know if that affected our uh website, I would find out. Um I did tell her that they they were posted out front, and that um we didn't have to have them posted, it was a courtesy. But no way was I suggesting we were not going to, I had a very pleasant conversation with Cindy. I'm surprised, and if she feels any differently, I would certainly love to hear from her, because that is not the way that conversation happened at all this morning.
Thank you for that.
And another point that I'm trying to make is why do we have to be told by city employees like they're doing the citizens a favor by even posting it to begin with? That should never even come up, there should be no.
Posting outside the.
Posting minutes or anything else.
Oh, on the website.
Site, so people can see when these meetings are.
Okay, well, we can do, we can do better and make sure that it's gets updated, everyone is very busy, and we're we're trying to do the best we can. Once again, we're, everything that's required to do, we're doing, um but.
And there it is, everything that's required, just step back a little bit, put it online, and stop threatening people with what a big favor you're doing them. Gee.
We'll try to do better and get things online um in a more timely fashion, so people don't have to drive a thousand feet down to City Hall and look at the agenda, so we'll try to do better.
Especially with our technology today, that's where everybody wants to stop. Yeah, no, I'm not gonna stop, I'm staying with this.
Do you have another item of, item?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, we basically nothing yet, then.
Anything else?
She should be done, she's talked for Judy and she's talked for Cindy, so she should be done now.
It's none of your business, Mike, who I talk for, I'm a council member and I represent Cindy. You might remember that, that you're supposed to be representing the people of this community.
Are there any other elected official comments? All right, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned at six forty five P M. Good night, everybody.